John, there's extra chairs if you want to pull them out there. You want to pull other chairs so you guys can sit?
Thanks. Oh my, you let the person with the bad foot do it? Good evening, I'd like to call the April 1 Lemester School Committee to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll read the Lemester Committee's statement, "The committee represents the needs of all Lemester Public School students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemester." At this time, like to open up for public comment, is there anybody in the room that would like to talk? Please come to the table, state your name and address. Second time? Anybody online? Chris? No? Third time? Alright, we'll close. Any communications? Student report?
Alright, so, alright. So Lemester High School, tomorrow is Autism Awareness Day. So, the high school is encouraging all students to wear blue in support with our students with autism. Trio is bringing eighth grade students to the high school tomorrow to find about, to find out about high school opportunities. Junior prom tickets are on sale and the junior prom is on April 27th, while senior prom tickets will go on sale shortly and their prom is May 18th. Third-term report cards are coming out on April 10th, third term ends on April 4th. The annual health fair will be held on April 9th at Lemester High School. And then, Dr. Amato said that there was a scheduled safe driving assembly for juniors. Pretty sure, we don't, we don't know exactly what that is. And then, the Life Skills Talent Show will be on April 12th from 12:15 to the end of the day. Last week at Lemester High School, over 500 sophomores took the English MCAS. And then, on our half-day on Good Friday, Stump ran a 3v3 basketball tournament. And Lemester Athletic News, Lemester Lacrosse played a tough game against Oakmont the other night. And then, the, the rest of teams, I think tennis, girls tennis starts today, boys tennis will start Wednesday. Hopefully, and boys, or baseball will start next week, softball will start next week.
Hopefully no snow.
Hopefully no. For you.
Right, for me, the seniors are all like, come on!
And then, I'm gonna read Marcus's report because he's out sick. So he said, "In CTI, they're piloting a stock market simulator that helps students learn about business and finance through the lens of the stock market. The platform integrates a best-in-class curriculum with realistic portfolio management capabilities, including the brokerage of stocks, bonds, and mutual funds. Students will receive $100,000 to trade, to trade with upon enrollment, plus they can earn more funds by completing lessons in various tasks." And he said, "We are hardly one week in and there have already been 242 trades and 60% of CTI students have completed their first batch of lessons five days before."
Great, thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yes, this evening, Katie, could you come with your team? I'd like to introduce, this is Katie Shartrun, she's an academic tutor here at LHS, she's also the president of the tutor union. And she is going to talk to us about our students who just participated in Skills USA, and if you look around the room, you can see.
Thank you for having us, my name's Katie Shartrun, I'm the advisor for Skills USA. If you four want to come forward. Skills USA is a nationally-run organization and we compete with our technical schools based on our shops. First, they start in their district's level, they'll compete against the locals, which is Monty Tech, Bay Path, Blackstone Valley, all the Worcester Technical Schools. This is just a few of our students, but these kids actually came in on our PD day, they sat down, took a two-hour test. The test was 70%, based on the skills, the shops that they are in. Some of it was Skills USA oriented and the other part was OSHA oriented. We have two silver medalists and two gold medalists, they're gonna be going on and competing in states in two weeks. Skills USA teaches them about becoming good employees, teaches them about adaptability, being flexible, all of the career-oriented organizations getting them prepared for professionals, whether they continue going technically or if they further education. But we're very, very proud of them, they've worked so hard, especially compared to the other schools, I was just saying, we pull in with our van outside and we park next to Monty Tech with three school buses and we walk away with medals, so, thank you for this time.
So proud of this group.
This is one of our, this is Evan and Jacob's robot, they're gonna be competing in urban search and rescue. If you see they're holding, this is part of, the Army National Guard puts this test on, they'll go in, they have timed, they have to turn and face the TV with their remote control, grab that little three-inch by three-inch square, remove it, bring it out, and put it into a box without, with their remote. So they're still in progress, they're making it right now, but they're doing great, they built this whole thing.
Good job.
Yeah.
Very good job. Congrats!
Later on this evening, we will be looking for a vote, they have their next trip this month.
Yeah, they'll be going to states, it's an overnight competition, three days down in Marlboro, it's August 25th to the 27th.
Don't push it, Katie.
Congratulations to all of you, does anybody have questions for these students?
No. Great accomplishments. Anything else on superintendent? Paul, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Alright, we'll go on to presentations, we'll go to the fiscal year 25 budget presentation.
So first, I want, little, well, it's about 10 pounds, so. First, I want to thank the leadership team that's in the room this evening, we have our cabinet members, our principals, our facility, facilities director, our STEM coordinator. Where these discussions started, really, back on July 2nd. As soon as we get started, we start taking notes, looking at where we're at, where we want to be, and start moving. By December, each one of our principals was knee-deep with their staff, trying to determine what the needs for their building and their students would be for the FY25 budget. Lots of conversations, dialogue, back and forth, back and forth, we've done our research, we've looked at numbers, trends, assessments. And the decisions that we have come upon are very much about student needs. Classroom is our main focus this year for FY25 and we have also enlisted the help of our city's comptroller, who's been wonderful about giving us the documentations we need to move forward, advice around inflation rates. She works with us hand-in-hand, it's been a very nice partnership, keeps us on the right path. Lots of conversations, right ma'am?
Yes.
She's so wonderful. Moving forward for this year, regardless of who you are as a learner or your learning style, you could be a traditional student, you could be a Vo-Tech, project-based, you, you name it. The budget that is being presented tonight, although preliminary, is in service of the classroom, the classroom is the focus. And students will benefit from the decisions that have been made and put forth. We are feeling strong about what we are presenting, we're hoping to move this forward. I would ask to let Melanie, and this is Kelsey Horn, she is our financial analyst, they have taken everybody's ideas and put numbers to it. We feel strongly about getting this done. But let them get through the process, let them get through the presentation, because each question you may have could be answered on the next slide. At that point, I will open up the meeting and let you speak to a cabinet member, or a principal, or whomever you would like in the room. Okay, so they just asked to hold questions.
That, thank you Superintendent, good evening. Kelsey and I are going to cover the following budget guidelines tonight, the foundation formula, the foundation budget, Chapter 70, and net school spending as it relates to the Lemester Public Schools and its students' needs. Sure this works. Alright, Chapter 70 is the state aid distributed to schools throughout Massachusetts. The formula aims to ensure that each school district has sufficient resources to provide an adequate education for all of its students, considering the ability of each local government to contribute. A district's budget is determined by multiplying the number of students at each grade level and demographic characteristics by a set of education spending categories, and then adding the two-dollar amounts together. Most of us know the foundation budget is driven by student enrollment. The other part of the Chapter 70 formula is the local contribution. The portion, this portion is the amount each district has the ability to reasonably contribute from local tax revenue towards the operation of its schools. It's driven by the city's property values and resident income. Chapter 78 is then determined by filling the gap between a district's required local contribution and its foundation budget. Look at that squares, not. I'll get the hang of it. Alright, in total, for fiscal '25, the preliminary increase in our net school spending is $4,071,288. $2,311,084 is from Chapter 78 and $1,760,624 is from the required district contribution. This is not our final budget number. The House and the Senate release and debate their versions of the budget before negotiating a single version that will be signed by the start of the fiscal '25 school year by the governor, usually June or July. Massachusetts continues to address the inequitable gaps for low-income students, English learners, and special education over the years with the Student Opportunity Act. The act is now in its fourth year. Over the last few years, the formula has created an influx of resources from the state level for the Lemester Public Schools. We will now see the formula start to plateau and normalize our Chapter 70 increases, which have historically been anywhere between 2.5% and 4.8%. This one's a little small, it might be better to see on your, in front of you. As mentioned in the, in the previous slide, Chapter 70 is heavily impacted by student enrollment and demographics. The formula is based on the school district enrollment as of October 1st from the prior year. It takes the 13 enrollment categories and demographic groups, i.e. preschool, kindergarten, elementary vocational, special education, and multiplies each by the cost rate in 11 different spending categories. You've got administration, instructional leadership, pupil services, employee benefits, etc. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, otherwise known as DESI, computes foundation enrollment using student-specific data submitted by each school through the Student Information Management System, SIMS. District-wide enrollment was down by 11 students from fiscal '24 to fiscal '25, again reminding you that that's as of October 1st from the prior year. The low-income per student rate increased 8.8%, giving us 1.4 million of our increase in the formula adjustment. Fiscal '25 general fund budget will be supplemented by several other resources that are available. We have revolving accounts that support specific programs or services, such as Circuit Breaker, which is used to supplement special education tuitions, and school choice, which offsets the cost of students who attend from another district, and those are labeled under other revolving, other revenue slash revolving. This line includes the estimated revenue for fiscal '25 and the revenue that we have been able to carry forward from fiscal '24. There are also reoccurring federal and state grant funds through DESI to support the goals and needs of the district. The district was also given one-time federal funding, as you can see at the bottom. This was provided to the school district to address the impact of COVID-19 pandemic and is available through September of fiscal '25. The district received $11,193,495 in ESER III back in fiscal '22 and the funds will be expended by September 30th fiscal '25. Those three together are the 11 million for ESER III, that doesn't include anything we received for ESER I or II. Correct, so if we weren't, if it wasn't expended, we were allowed to carry it into the next fiscal year? Yes? Okay. It is not, no, it's one-time, one-time funds. The ESER funding has been critical in addressing unprecedented challenges. ESER II and III addressed some health and safety projects, such as security cameras, cleaning equipment, updating and upgrading HVAC equipment, and mainly supporting students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health. In this slide, you can see the areas ESER III has and will continue to fund through September 30th, 2024.
So we're gonna get to that, Dean, she just asked if she could get through all of it, because it might be answered.
Yeah. You may, you may have some questions that might have some answers in some, in some later slides. Alright. So I've broken down the fiscal '25 general fund budget request into seven pieces. The budget process begins by first determining what the district's contractual and fixed costs are. Wages and salaries, benefits, special education tuitions, indirect charges, repair and maintenance, technology, and then other. We'll start with the largest expenditure to the district, wages and salaries and benefits, which together account for 78% of the budget. For fiscal '25, wages and salaries make up 63% of the school's general fund budget. Projected salaries include contractual increases, such as the cost of living increase, step increase, lane increases, longevity stipends, extracurricular stipends. We include currently posted positions, which are essential positions that have not been filled in fiscal '24 and therefore need to be carried forward to fiscal '25. The projected wages and salaries also includes new positions, necessary based on projected enrollment, class size, and student need. For fiscal '25, the district is requesting a total of 906.3 FTEs, or full-time equivalent positions, equalling $65,36,011. The district is requesting the following FTEs in the general fund, posted positions or carry-forward positions of 5.3 FTEs that were posted in fiscal '24 but are not filled. These positions equal $285,731. The district is also requesting an additional 16.3 FTEs for fiscal '25, equalling $1,068,615. The general fund will be absorbing 6.2 FTEs from the ESER grant and 1.8 FTEs from Title I grant, for a total of $684,692. These positions for the general fund will total 29.5 FTEs for $2,039,038. The positions will address the growing areas of student need. It was also a need to increase a couple of the line items in the budget, summer nurses, extracurricular stipends, and substitutes and coaches. So the total increase to the general fund for those extra line items is $147,500. For a total increase to the general fund salary, $4,902,447. You can also reference Tab 2 in your budget book, that has the complete breakdown of staffing considerations. Beyond the general fund, the district will be using revolving funds to hire two vocational teachers for the business and the plumbing programs. Benefits and fixed charges make up 15% of the budget request. The numbers include benefits such as health insurance, dental insurance, and life insurance for both active and retired employees, as well as their beneficiaries. You can see historically, the increase in cost can be anywhere from 0 to 10%. We try to budget based on a historical average with input from our city comptroller. The increase is not always due to an increase in the cost of insurances. Member participation has been steadily growing over the years. For fiscal '25, we are increasing the benefits and fixed charges line by 9.3% or $1,326,224. This is based on enrollment, steady growth in membership, and new positions. Special education tuitions have always been a tough projection for the budget. The costs can fluctuate greatly from year to year, depending on the individual student service needs, how many students may move into the district with service needs, and how many students may age out. The increase in rates for our district, for out-of-district placements, is determined by the state. So for fiscal '24, it's important to mention that the state had approved a 14% increase in rates. As you can see, that had a big effect on our budget. By the end of fiscal '24, we're projected to see a total increase of 20.9% in our cost. In the last 14 years, the rate increase has ranged from 2% to 14% annually. For fiscal '25, we are projecting a 9.2% increase in the general fund budget. This equates to $758,323. The district will also be able to carry forward $2.6 million of Circuit Breaker revolving revenue to help offset some of that tuition cost. Indirect charges are the expenses that are incurred by the city for the benefit of the schools. This includes costs such as administration, retirement expenses, DPW, services, school resource officers, state assessments for school choice sending tuitions, and charter schools. On an annual basis, the city comptroller provides the school with an agreement, followed by a, that's a Kyle question, sorry. Do you have a copy of the slides, ma'am? Okay. I know. Sorry, on an annual basis, the city comptroller provides the school with an agreement, followed by a summary sheet and supplemental details of calculations for these expenses. For fiscal '25, the total indirect charges are estimated to be $6,413,256. I am now going to turn this over to my trusted seat here, Kelsey, she's gonna go through the next few slides for everybody. That's okay. Yep. Correct. Or the... Those are FT, it's, it's full-time equivalents. Okay, I, I said it in my verbiage, though, I could write it somewhere. Sure. We can do that. I've got my trusty little clicker here, it's very good. Right, that's... Well, this one's for wages and salaries. Right, so this would, we could put a column for that. Sure, visually, yes.
Sure. Okay, so noted, so noted. Okay, I've got that down.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Sure. Absolutely.
Kelsey? There you go. Good evening, everybody. Lemester Public Schools constantly works to improve our technological infrastructure. Our technology department continues to provide efficient and accessible technology for all students and staff district-wide through our technology replacement program one-to-one. In addition to providing accessible and updated technology, we have prioritized the efficiency and security of our district's network through the fiber project. Costs associated with this overall improvements include hardware and software upgrades, Wi-Fi networks, device management systems, and technical, technical support staff. As we transition to FY25, the 2% increase in the instructional technology budget will cover the costs to maintain our current technical initiatives, while providing funding for overall network improvements and staffing related to these upgrades. Our district strives to provide safe and accessible education to the community. Utilities repair and maintenance budget provide funding to ensure a healthy environment for all LPS staff and students. For FY25, utilities repair and maintenance costs account for 5% of the expense budget request, or $5,210,979.25. The facility department has set forth multiple significant projects for FY25, including continuing the new building project housing our new LCE program, resuming the MSBA project for Fallbrook, and many more. Along with these various maintenance and repair projects, LPS has also made great strides in enhancing our school's security. We have hired a safety and security specialist, whose responsibilities include improving current security measures, implementing updated standard and emergency operating procedures, developing efficient emergency communications, and ensuring compliance with both federal and state agency safety regulations. Aside from these items, we have seen general cost increase for regular utility services provided to the districts, such as gas and utility, or gas and electric, sorry. The 5.5% increase to our utilities repair and maintenance budget proposal represents costs for the major projects discussed, increased regular maintenance costs, the district's security enhancements, as well as staffing related to these initiatives. The remaining 3% of our FY25 budget proposal, equating to $2,681,024.76, is used to pay essential expenses that directly affect students in our classrooms and our district as a whole. One example of a district-wide cost within this budget includes our Harper's payroll processing costs. This cost ensures the accurate and timely delivery of compensation for the wonderful efforts of our LPS staff. One example of classroom direct cost within this budget includes hiring medical slash therapeutic services for students. These services aid students in reaching their academic goals. We've experienced challenging times hiring for... We've experienced challenging times hiring for these specific services internally. Therefore, the funding from this budget covers the cost for contracting required medical/therapeutic services. Although these expenses within the all-other budget vary in categories and correlation to our district and classrooms, they are all essential to uphold efficient operations for LPS.
Yep. Lemister Public Schools is requesting $65,036,011 in wages and salaries, $32,221,023 in expenses, $6,413,256 in indirect charges, for a total fiscal '25 net school spending needs-based budget of $103,670,289. Thank you for supporting the students of Lemister, and we will now open it up for questions. Absolutely. Right. Correct. Right. That's very easy to add a column for that.
Yep.
Sure. I, I absolutely will. Uh, no, Kelsey's gonna end up going home, but I will stay. Yep.
If you don't mind staying, Kelsey.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. That's fine.
I can stay, Mayor. You know, I was born a red raider and now I'm raised a blue devil.
Oh, Kelsey, you were okay to that.
Say that. That's okay.
I did.
Came to the right.
Yes.
Came to the light.
We're a member of the CAPS organization, and CAPS has brought forward a request to have Air Shirley join as part of the CAPS program. It's a great opportunity. So, so there's been discussions, it's been approved initially through CAPS, but we have to go back to each of our member districts and have each of our member districts vote on allowing it. Unfortunately, I haven't received the form from CAPS to present that was gonna be part of the supporting documentation. So there's actually not gonna be a vote on anything tonight, but there will be something coming forward because each district does have to vote on it, and then it has to go to DESI, and they're trying to get it done before the end of the school year.
So we'll just add it to the next, next agenda?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So noted. We'll now move on to the superintendent search update. Eileen, you can start off.
Hi. We, um, have selected our, um, candidates to interview, and our interviews start, um, tomorrow. Hopefully Tuesday and Thursday pending...
Be fine. Where did all this storm stuff come from?
So, uh, once we finish, uh, with interviewing potential candidates, we will then, um, submit, um, any recommendations for finalists to the entire committee, um, to interview. And we will have to come up with interview questions and things like that. I think we did some of our, um, past, um, interviews of, uh, potential superintendents.
All right.
And we can, best we go.
Did you get your question, Eileen? Why you smiling at me? A little worried about that. Um, and just for my benefit, I'm saying this to remind myself, we're, we're not gonna be here tomorrow. We're gonna be at Skyview in the, uh, bucket there. I didn't do it for anybody else's sake here, except for my...
In the executive session, so it is closed, um, to everybody.
We open the meeting in public session, and then we go...
For the actual...
So you're welcome to come, but then we kick you out.
Right.
Basically what she's saying. And then we put smoke up. All right. Thank you, Eileen. And approval of the minutes from the March 18th, 2024. All right. We have a second. Any questions or comments, errors, omissions? Everything looks good? All in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, policy, subcommittee? Thank you. Finance updates?
Yes, uh, we have several warrants and a, three transfers to go through.
All right.
Um, so warrant number 35 totaling $272,795.55. Warrant 36, $2,497,436.38. Warrant 37, the same thing twice. Uh, warrant number 37, $842,831.56. And warrant 38 totaling $3,278,077. And...
For the grant separate, right? All right. So you have a recommendation to approve? By Greg?
I'll second.
By Melissa? Are there any comments or questions? Okay. If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move on to, uh, grants and revolving funds.
Hey, grants. Warrant 35 totaling $87,327.24. Warrant 36 totaling $229,657.20. Warrant number 37, $263, uh, $263,770.47. Warrant 38 totaling $598,087.30.
Hey, that's the recommendation?
Same. Yeah. Yep. That's okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Definitely fine. Now? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we had three transfers. Okay. Doing them one at a time? Is that what we need? Vote? Yeah. Okay. So first transfer, uh, requesting to transfer $900,000 from salaries, DESI code 2305 and 2330 to the general fund, DESI code 2320.
For the recommendation, is there a second? Right, second. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of the transfer? Okay.
Second transfer is to request, uh, $70,000 from expenses, DESI code 2455 to expenses, DESI code 4450.
For the recommendations, second? Second. All in favor? Those opposed?
And the last transfer request is requesting to transfer $46,581 from expenses, DESI code 4210 to expenses, DESI code 7500.
Second then.
All in favor? Ron, you in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Those opposed? If not? Approved. And now we'll move on to approval of the field trip.
Um, we have an overnight for the students that were here earlier this evening to go to the next, uh, level, so we need...
Second.
Eileen and Greg is the second. All in favor? Those opposed? Approved. Approval of the Kendall Fund payment.
Uh, Dr. Romano at the high school and Tyler would like to have a transfer of two payments, one for the junior prom and one for the senior prom, uh, for an amount of $5,000. Total, $2,500 each.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Is that right, Tyler?
I second it.
Man, you've been pushing your way around ever since you got on here.
I think Tyler said that he didn't care about the juniors.
He didn't say it. He never said it. All right. So there's a recommendation. We have a second. Second by Jennifer. Any questions or comments? If not, those opposed? All right. Be good. Do your best behavior. I'll be checking. We send that robot with a camera. That robot's gonna watch everything you move. In fact, we're gonna broadcast it out face, Facebook. All right. We're moving right along, as they say. Uh, approval of the warrants. We've done transfers. We've done... New or old business, anyone? New or old business?
One is the, um, I know you submitted something to the city council about the, um, the compensation for the school community members. I didn't know if there was an update or whether something else...
I, I submitted it to them figuring maybe they would come up with the amount. I didn't wanna submit it and then have them, you know, like cut it and then format it and cutting it, so... I think they're looking for some suggestions. So, I guess.
So I guess...
Email me with your suggestions. All right. And then I'll... Yes. And then, uh, then at least I'll give them a couple.
Yep.
Put a couple ideas in there, just so there's a couple of ideas. Right? No. No. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. I'm kidding. You're wearing the right blue tonight, so. Yes, that was excellent. Say a couple ideas. Here's a couple other school systems. Tell us what you want. All right. Nothing on the old and the business?
Um, what about that situation where the...
Right. Initially, did the policy... So when the policy meeting happens, we'll... Yep.
Thank you. Um, the other thing is I knew, uh, I brought up last time the day on the hill. Um, Ron, you're going. I don't know if anybody else is.
Shale's gone.
Oh, nice.
May 6th.
And then I know we just got, um, in the mail about the, um, conference, um, in the fall, um, for early bird registration. Nobody has to, um, make a determination right now, but really by the end of, um, the school year, you should, um, sort of pencil it in and let Chris know so that we can get a discounted, you know, rate for those members who are going, and I would highly encourage everyone to attend if you're at all. Lots of wonderful workshops to... Six of, you know, cutting-edge things that are going on. So I just want...
Like it. So we got six months. Don't wait for the last minute. Like me. Well, I don't always know. I can, it always seems to be the busy time of year. Okay. Nothing else on the new world business? All is good? All right. We're gonna go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation.
That's contact negotiation, and we will...
We will not be coming out. So thank you, everybody. Thank you to all the leadership team. Appreciate your attendance.
Thank you.